The reason that we have the parking agreement, if you look at all the spaces for all of the uses, and they were full up all the time, we're short a few spaces. Not many, about four, five, or six, something like that, once we add in the parking in front of the building. But because of the use times of the parking, we don't believe that there's significant problem, because the church again utilizes it on Sunday, and for example, Navy credits shut down on Sunday. And for part of the time that the church will be doing services, the store will be, but not all of it. So there will be some conflict there. But that's why when we talked to Harbor Freight, they wanted some dedicated parking, which will be the ones, of course, right in front of their store. So this will work out best for everybody.
Okay, thank you. So we're not this good? Sorry.
Yeah, and to be very honest with you, if we look at the, if we were looking at pure parking violations relative to the CUP filed by the church, they would be the one in trouble. So I have no interest in pursuing that unless you do wish to argue with the church about that.
When are they scheduled to open, do you know?
Beg your pardon? Oh, yeah, within the next two weeks.
Okay.
They're that far along.
Thank you.
So part of the discussion on the parking, and the reason we did a parking agreement as well, is that what we find in the city, and a number of times, is we just don't have sufficient parking. So the requirement was for this many, and so we wanted the agreement to be tailored, that as long as they have the life of that lease, that this is assigned to them. And that way, we're not exacerbating the problem, we're just a wink and a nod, and actually requiring dedicated parking.
And we're requiring that that, oh, by the way, that the ADA is in there and so on. So we're cleaning that up at the same time, because there's a limited amount of ADA now that wouldn't meet the requirement. So we have an engineering condition that they require the ADA requirement for parking and so on, entrance and all that.
Any other comments from the commission? So this is a discussion item. If there's something from the public, if the public would like to make any comments about Harbor Freight, it's not an action item or a public hearing. Mr. Matthews.
Yes, Dave Matthews, address is on file with the city clerk. It's been a while since I've been in that parking lot. Is there an entrance to the parking lot from the north, on the north side?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. And I thought, as I glanced through some of this material online, that they're going to move the loading dock to the south end of the building?
That's correct.
Okay, that's going to take out some, well, maybe not necessarily. There used to be parking in front of that doorway before, but I guess maybe that wouldn't matter too much right now. The other thing that kind of bothers me is that the city council has to abandon the alley right away. Is that correct?
That is correct, I believe in the.
And they haven't done it yet.
That's correct.
So what happens if something comes up and they don't? So they got a Plan Two, Plan B?
Yeah, Plan B, Plan B would be to put ballisters out in front of the front door, but the problem with that is that it would partially block the alleyway, so we'd have to give them some access that way.
Okay.
And that would be a safety issue.
Yeah.
So we decided that it would be better to do the alley. We're assuming that if our engineering and pining department supports it, that we hope that the planning, that the council will agree with us and, for safety purposes, do that. There's no, the city's not utilizing that alleyway in any way right now, so.
Yeah, except for sewer and a few others.
Well, sewer would still stay there, yes, sir. They'd have, they can't build a building on it, but sewer would be there.
And as far as the signees on the building, did you say that there's going to be a sign on Balsam Street as well?
No, there's no sign on Balsam Street as presented. There is a sign on the front of the building which faces China Lake Boulevard, and there is a sign, it's a pole sign that's there now. You see Lindsay Furniture, that will, those panels will be replaced to show Harbor Freight.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, they're orienting the total building towards China Lake. We had several conversations about that, because we have an interest as a city to have Balsam be improved. But unfortunately, they are, they were not interested in Balsam's traffic, they were only interested in China Lake's traffic.
The other thing I'm looking at is, I don't know how big their, their delivery trucks would be, but I hope in the parking lot striping that they make access for them. I'm assuming they're going to come in off of Balsam Street.
I would, too.
If they're going to be exiting, then probably either on China Lake, or the one to the north, whatever that is. So I hope they make plenty of provision for the big trucks to get out of there as well.
Yeah, we did talk to them about that, and they said they have the room for it, so.
Any other public comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward, we'll move into 10A, abatement and public hearing pursuant to the Richcrest Municipal Code 4-15, 104 of property at 215 West Panaman Avenue, APN-067-150-24. Turn the time over to staff.
This is, as stated, an abatement for 215 West Panaman Avenue. Current property owner listed is Maria Del Carmen Melgar, who is deceased. Current address, 215 West Panaman Avenue. The property was signed over by the deceased husband to Edu A. Enriquez, also at the same address. RMC violation is 4-15-101C1, which is accumulation of debris, junk, garbage, or refuse. In this investigation, I'm going to be discussing, it's going to be rather lengthy, but I think you need to know the background of the history of this particular property, considering what's been going on. There have been three previous cases on this property prior to the current one. Case 123078, opened September 24, 2012. Case 142271, opened July 10, 2014. Case 143051, opened September 9, 2014. And the current case, 163036, opened August 26, 2016. All four cases involve RMC 4-15-101C1. Three citations have been issued in the past two years to Ms. Enriquez. The listed property owner is Ms. Enriquez's mother, who passed away several years ago. Contact was made with her stepfather, who stated he signed over the property to Ms. Enriquez several years prior, however, due to her current financial status, has been unable to transfer the deed to her name. On June 23, 2014, I received a citizen complaint of excess garbage trash behind the property, causing a foul smell and a health hazard. A search of this address and rims revealed the previous case, indicating a similar situation in September 2012. A letter was sent to the property owner at that time, indicating, as this was a repeat violation, any future violations of this code will result in a citation issued without warning. The same date, I met with Ms. Enriquez, who stated the trash would be removed that day. Advised her if it was not removed by the morning of June 25, 2014, a citation would be issued. Inspection of the property on June 25, 2014, revealed no trash had been removed and a citation issued. On July 7, 2014, contact with Waste Management revealed this address has not had trash removal since May of 2013. I subsequently contact, was contacted by business owners on West Station Street, behind Ms. Enriquez's property, who stated they would provide a large dumpster for her to place all her trash in it, as it was constantly blowing throughout the neighborhood. Waste Management provided a three-yard, oops, let me get the slides going. Provided a three-yard container, free of charge, for her to place all her trash and garbage in it. On July 15, 2014, the container was placed behind her residence. Ms. Enriquez appeared in court August 8, 2014, for the citation issued June 25, and received a written notice to correct the violation. On August 26, 2014, the property was re-inspected and determined to be cleared of all previous violations. Ms. Enriquez was mailed a letter that advised that if there are future violations of the RMC violations, it will result in her receiving another citation without warning, and her property will be monitored regularly. On September 8, 2014, I again received another call regarding excessive amounts of trash, furniture, and debris in the front and side yards of the property. On September 9, 2016, probably 2014, I met with Ms. Enriquez and issued her another citation. The furniture and trash and debris were subsequently removed. On August 25, 2016, an RPD officer advised he was required to respond to 215 West Panaman Avenue regarding the residence of the property stealing water from a neighbor. The officer stated he verified there was no water to the residence of the property, and that the occupants confirmed it. The same date, I contacted the Indian Wells Valley Water District, who stated the water had been turned off and the meter locked on July 21, 2016, due to non-payment. Contact with Southern California Edison also advised that electrical power had been shut off on that same date to, due to non-payment. Clear inquiry revealed the listed property owner, Ms. Melgar, passed away April 24, 2011. Inquiries with the Kern County Treasurer Tax Collector website revealed the property tax currently owed is $5,643.74, with the last tax bill having been paid April 10, 2009. The property was in power-to-sell status, which means Kern County could seize it and sell it at an auction to receive their money back. On August 26, 2016, I responded to the location with two RPD officers advising the residents of the property to include Ms. Enriquez, that there, that as there was no water or power to the structure, it was being red-tagged as being unsafe for human occupancy under California Health and Safety Code Section 17920.3. Ms. Enriquez was advised they had until 1700 on that date to vacate the structure. She asked if she was able to have the water and power turned back on, if she could stay, and was told yes. Red tags were posted on the front of the structure, as well as the right and left side of the doors. In addition, it was also noted there was an excessive amount of trash, junk, and debris in the backyard area. In previous cases, Ms. Enriquez was given a citation for these violations, as she had knowledge of requiring the trash not to build up, and required it to be removed at least weekly. She was issued administrative citation A0053 for violation of RMC 4-15-101C1 and 13-1.3A, which is basically, it's required to remove trash on a weekly basis. Although the citation that I gave her did not give a corrected by date, I advised Ms. Enriquez, if she was able to have the water and power turned back on, and if the trash and junk and debris are not removed from the backyard by Tuesday, September 6, 2016, she will be issued another citation. On October 12, 2016, Ms. Enriquez was provided an authorization, authorization to enter access her property when she arrived at the police station inquiring about entering her property to obtain her belongings. She was also provided the notice of pre-abatement public hearing to abate property, which the hearing to be conducted November 22, 2016. I advised Ms. Enriquez that if the property were cleaned up before the hearing took place, it would be canceled and the case closed. Subsequently, the Planning Commission meetings were canceled for the next two months, and letters were mailed to the Panaman Address advising of the changes to include this meeting on January 24, 2017. Although Ms. Enriquez did provide me with her cell phone number, calls were not answered, and the voicemail feature was not set up. On December 30, 2016, I re-inspected the property, and it appears someone has been bagging the trash, garbage, and debris. However, there continues to be an excessive amount of loose debris in the backyard area. Currently, there is a slight smell of garbage, however, once spring summer arrives, it will likely cause neighbors to complain again. On January 11, 2017, I re-inspected the property, and the bags of trash alongside the structure had been removed. However, a large amount of furniture, trash, garbage, junk, and debris remain in the backyard. This morning, today, I re-inspected the property, and the bagged trash had been removed, however, there was still an excessive amount of trash, garbage, and debris in the backyard of the property. An inquiry with the Kern County Tax Assessor website this date revealed all back-end current property taxes have been paid as of December 21, 2016. According to Ms. Enriquez, she is in the process of selling the property, and is starting up probate again, so she can get the property in her name, and transfer title once it's sold. The prospective buyer paid the back taxes, so it would not go to a tax auction. Once sold, she stated she plans to move to Trona. Order of abatement to be conducted by the property owner, the complete removal of all trash, junk, garbage, and debris on the property, that the abatement be conducted, will be completed no later than February 7, 2017.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. I didn't know if you were done, or needed to whet your whistle. Commissioners' comments or questions? I have a few, but.
I have one.
Do you have anything?
Go ahead. No. I have one general question, which I always wanted to ask. Do you, does officer need to read all these? The meeting, it's a lengthy one, so can we just bullet those things? Is that okay? I mean, I don't know.
Well, I think what we're trying to do is, because in city council, they run into a few problems where they felt like that we're overpushing in some instances, that we're taking property away, or we're doing this, or we're doing that. And so Officer Booth wanted to go to great lengths, not only for the listening public, but for those that are here, that this is what we've done to try and work with her, and what amount of time we've been trying to work with her, so that it's not just us being heavy-handed, because we've seen trash collection that's offered free containers, we've seen other opportunities for her to, you know, clean up the property. And so I think it's important for the public, and those that are listening, to understand that this is a long process. This isn't something that we do lightly or arbitrarily. So that's, that's why he reads the process, and I know it takes some time, but I think it's important for everybody to understand, if they didn't get the expanded agenda.
Can you agree with that, Officer?
I basically wanted to make sure that you knew the background of it, because it's basically, over a two or three-year period, I've been trying to work with this property owner. And each time I have her clean it up, it again starts looking like this. And the neighbors are, basically the one that's next door, he has rental property there, and he says he can't get anybody to rent a place because of the smell.
Sure. And in view of the recent developments, where the property taxes are paid, and the property is being, not in escrow, but it's being sold?
That's what she claims.
Oh, okay.
But obviously, whoever, somebody had to pay that amount of money, and she told me that it was the new buyer, the one who wants to buy the property. Because being that it is in power-to-sell, Kern County could put it, would have been able to put it up for auction this coming March.
So if she doesn't do the abatement, then we have to step in and do that, right?
The resolution I want is to basically clean up the property. If she doesn't complete it, I will go out and hire a contractor to clean it all up and haul it away, then put a lien on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
That's actually exactly what I was going to ask, is what's the process from this point on?
Well, if I do the abatement, and we do, and I put a lien on the property, and then come June timeframe, I put in a special assessment, which will go to the amount that's owed us, will go toward the property taxes, and will have to be paid in conjunction with it. And then the city gets their money back.
Okay. But they basically have till February 7?
Yes, sir.
To clean it up?
But obviously, I will work with her, and if I can see that she's actually doing a good job in getting rid of it, I'll hold off.
So my question would, would be this. Rather than just go out and do an abatement on this, and start that proceeding, can we get verification of this phantom individual that's going to buy the property, a letter of commitment? Because if it's got to go through a probate period, there's a certain amount of time, and get a commitment from him to clean up the property, because he has an invested interest, and give him a timeframe? Is there money owed to the city at this point? Did you write a citation, and is there, is there money owed?
I wrote a citation to Ms. Enriquez.
Okay.
And I don't know if she has paid it or not. And she hasn't told me who the current buyer is. She is difficult to get hold of, like I've mentioned.
Well, that's, you know, commission and public, that's, that's where I'm at, is obviously, somebody paid this money, and they need to be on board with this. And, and so do we, would we take the effort to try and contact her, and, and get this person, and get them into the process? Because certainly, they've invested $6,000 and something, and they're not willing to lose it. But if they understand that there's, there's an abatement out there, and there's going to be additional costs, he may want to clean it up himself.
Yeah, I will definitely try and get hold of Ms. Enriquez, and find out who the buyer is, and contact them.
So I'm okay with doing the abatement, but I really don't want to incur any additional cost to this property, or this, this property owner, if in fact, we have a true buyer that can be brought into the process and will do it, rather than us having to take city funds, pay a contractor, and then put a lien on it through the, through the deed.
Well, I agree. I will definitely.
So that would be my preference. Commission?
Sure. I don't think we can, we can't, you're not suggesting that we, we enforce that, but.
No, I'm, I'm okay with going ahead with the abatement, but I would prefer that he go to these steps before we actually enforce.
Sure. No, I understand that.
No, I have no problem with that at all.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Okay, so I will entertain a, oh, okay.
Dave Matthews, just, I just wanted to say, that's a good move, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so I will entertain a motion on Planning Commission Resolution 1703, Resolution of Planning Commission, City of Richcrest, confirming the finding of the code enforcement officer and ordering the property to be abated.
Second? Commissioner Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Roger Ratnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving into B, 10B, with SPR 17-4, SCC Administration Building Site Plan Review. Staff report.
Yes, sir. The, on January 10, 2017, Southern California Edison, along with Cal Architects, submitted an application for site plan review for a new 11,184 square foot prefabricated administrative building on the northwest section of this, of Southern California Edison's property, which is zone commercial service at 510 South China Lake Boulevard, with the existing, with the plan of the existing brick administrative building to be, which is currently there, to be demolished to make room for the proposed prefabricated building. The current administrative building is, is, with all of its small rooms leading to operational inefficiencies and confusing pathways of travel, with the restroom and other main entrance failing to meet the current accessibility requirements, on the on-site vehicle access being not ideal due to the close proximity to the entrance to customers' parking lot and to the intersection of China Lake Boulevard and Upjohn. The lack of off-site stacking area for Edison vehicles entering the site, and the current administrative building will be demolished to make room for this new prefabricated, and that's the reason for that. The first of many findings that I would like is to just identify that we, we are proposing that this be an infill project, which meets the requirement of the category exemption 15332 under the current SEQA guidelines. So we believe this is a category exempt project, due to the infill nature of it. Within the site plan submitted to the Planning Commission is a, both an aerial for this site, which is showing the proposed site, and the current administrative building, which we'll see on the left side, to be demolished, and looking east from the planned prefab building. Also is an existing heli-part and an existing pole storage. These areas would be affected by this as well. This is part of the planned site plan. The existing garage building is to remain, and that's a pretty new actual building. And this is the proposed site plan, as we see it presented today, in our application. You will notice that the, the new site administrative building is essentially noted on the, your northern, western part of the, of the drawing that you see there. The existing building that you see, which many of you will see going Upjohn, is a storage and, already approved and built, storage and for hazmat and other materials. This, this building includes also a parking and entrance area, that you'll note, as well as plans for additional projects to be built in the future, which are identified in the building, site plan, but may not propose today, but showing in the site plan. The interior of the building, this is just a TI part of the building you can see, which brought up some concern within the staff on this discussion, and, which I will describe in a second, are concerns. This is the north elevation of the building, and the south elevation of the building, as you can see, along with the east elevation and west elevations of the building. It's a prefab building, obviously, with a slider roof, as you can see. Which, by the way, is pretty, pretty, I'm sorry, is pretty much, and those are the drawings I have. This is pretty much a, much like what the building you'll see, is, has a look that's similar to the storage building that we see in Upjohn, has a similar look. We also, just for reference, have a representative from Cal Architects representing Southern California Edison, so we can ask questions of those folks. The, the major concern, and the reason that we felt it needed to have site plan review, was the fact that the use of the building is changing somewhat. And we had, the staff had a question, is how the Planning Commission would like to view this in the future. The existing building is about, oh, at least 50 to 60 percent was for payment processing, so it was more of a commercial use. The new building is probably 80 percent office, and very little commercial payment processing of it all. So it's more of an office use. And it's sitting on a commercial zoned area, which is okay, because it's a down use, but it has different setback requirements, different as an office use, than a commercial building would have. So we're kind of looking for some direction in the future, as to how to view these as well, is, do you want to look at it from the perspective that staff is looking at it, that it's an office use now versus a commercial use? So there's a change in use, but it's in an appropriate zone. We can, you can do that in that zone, so you're, you're cool on that. But the offsets and setbacks and other things change slightly with the different zoning, with the different use. So that's one of the things that kicked off the site plan review from a staff standpoint. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that since it's an existing, the, the uses that you see, the conditions that you see for public works are exactly the same as you did. This building, this original plan was, came to you not This building, this original plan was, came to you, not the same building, but a similar building, I guess is the way I put it, came to you in 15, which went through your site plan review, some of you may remember. Those public work conditions are exactly the same in that site plan review as is now in this one. Those did not change at all. And we made some slight changes to the existing community development ones, which we can read through and go through individually if you'd like, or the public needs, but the major ones dealt with, again, the public, the office use versus the commercial use I described to you, and just meeting the conditions associated with that. The other question we have is that we're facing on a staff standpoint that we wanna bring up to you, and you're gonna see in some other site plan reviews that we're gonna talk about as well. Oh, by the way, we should probably, Chairman had brought this up, this is opening a public hearing, so we need to identify this as a public hearing item.
I'll open that after staff.
Okay, okay. And that is relative to landscaping. We did not put, we have a conflict going on in the mind of the staff right now, is if we can, we have a water shortage and a water issue that we're trying to conserve as much water, the city and the water district is heavily involved in trying to reduce water use in the community, and yet we have a coverage issue associated with landscaping. So we're asking, making the new developer put in landscaping, even if it's zero scape, it still uses water, as opposed to, you know, not. So what we chose to do is to not put the condition of landscaping in, and I wanna make sure that the Planning Commission knows that, because you can add that in if you wish, if you feel it's important. We chose not to do the landscaping condition, but rather put in their conditions associated that they meet our water use, if they put in their own landscaping relative to that, that they meet the plant requirement of the water district, you know, that they use drought-tolerant plants, and that they meet those water restriction conditions that we have. But we didn't put a coverage, which we normally might do in the past. An example of why we didn't do that is the, perhaps the Walmart project, where there was a requirement for landscaping, and there's been some concern about, even though it's zero scape, going into those, there's a lot of watering going on to establish that zero scape, and so that was prompted the staff to consider this as well. And something we need to have the Planning Commission become aware that it's not in there, and that if you want it in there, we need to add that to some of the plans we're gonna show here. Of course, we're not requiring that, but we're also not restricting, which is the other side of that, that in terms of landscape, other than the water uses that exist within the city municipal code and the water district's requirements, in terms of limiting the amount of landscaping either other than it has to be zero scape and meet those plants. So we're kind of being neutral on landscaping and requiring, however, that they meet our water. So we're trying to cite and favor the water restrictions as opposed to landscaping. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions or concerns you have relative to that. The staff is recommending site plan approval with the conditions presented, and feels that it will be an advantageous project for the city. We do, again, have the architect and Edison folks here, if you'd like to ask them specific questions or comments at this point as well. And that's the staff report, in a very short form.
Thank you. So let's open up the public hearing, but I'd like to start with the representatives from Southern California Edison.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Richard Smith. I'm the program manager for corporate real estate for Southern California Edison, in charge of the ongoing project on the corner of Upjohn and South China Lake. So I'm here to answer some questions. I do have a couple of quick comments. The use of the building, we've downsized a little bit of the front office where we take payments, because we've changed the methodology of payments. The staff that would use the new building is exactly the same staff that is in the building today. So no operation would change, with exception of the guys that do manual work in the very back of what would be our admin building today, have moved over into their own little structure. But the office portion and the people that occupy the building now would be the same exact staff. We've temporarily moved them in the trailers, we would just move them back. So essentially, we're changing the shell from the existing structure, which was the masonry structure. As we got into that structure, we found that there were some issues with the rebar, footings, some of the stuff that was constructed, the building's 60 years old, a long time ago, and in lieu of taking the risk of continually defining problems with that building, it's easier to just change the shell and have a new structure around the building.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions, and then if the commission has some questions for you, and then we'll turn it over to the public. In the staff report, it talked about if we have, whether it's commercial use, or anyway, if we change the use, that the setbacks are different. Do you have any feelings or comment on what the impact that would be if we changed the designation at all?
Hold on, I'll let Reed answer. One of the things that, and I did note, in the staff report, it talked about the Public Works Department. The language from the Public Works is exactly the same. In those Public Works, the first two items, item A and B, I think it's the subset 1 and 2 in the Public Works, were dedications along the corner of Upjohn and South China Lake for the turn signal that went in, and an additional dedication that came down China Lake. I haven't determined exactly if this offset would affect those, but those dedications are completed and actually have been provided to the city already. So those dedications are done.
Incorporated, okay.
Yes, and the five-foot sidewalk is also constructed along the China Lake Boulevard. What we have is, behind the sidewalk, we have at the south side 15 feet 9 inches, and on the top side, we have 14 feet 9 inches, whereas you asked for 15 feet. So we're just three inches less than your required 15 feet. There will be a fence line between the building and the back of the sidewalk. So I hope you can, you will accommodate 14 feet 9 instead of a 15-foot.
Okay, so that was part of the question, is what would be the impact if we insisted, basically?
We'll try and move it three inches, but there, as you can see, there's a driveway coming over. We'll have to look at the implication, how it impacts our site.
Okay. The other question I have for you is, have you given any thought to landscaping, zero scape, drought tolerance, something to enhance the building?
Absolutely.
And could you give us any thoughts, where staff is not really requiring it? I'm just wondering what SCE has thought.
Most of our buildings, we've actually went to a drought tolerant. Basically, for our commissioning, we went to a drought tolerant landscape plan. We have a complete landscape plan that is ready for the building. It is a drought tolerant plan, so it will be submitted.
I was gonna say, will you submit that to the city?
Yes, we will, having, we have already submitted to the city, and it is drought tolerant plants with gravel and some plants on it.
Similar to what you see out there now, that we modified some years back to a more drought tolerant landscape plan. But we would definitely work with the city as we go forward with that plan, that plan's already been submitted, to whatever level of drought tolerance you guys... I mean, we're obviously trying to conserve water through the state.
Sure.
So we're doing it on all of our facilities. We're even retrofitting our facilities with zero water, putting in rain containment areas, catch and rewatering, so, but we do have that plan, and it has been submitted.
Well, this is something the Planning Commission is gonna have to address, because we have kind of a conflict, and so you're ahead of the game, but I wanted to know what your plans were.
Yeah.
Looking at the north-south elevations, the north side facing Upjohn, correct?
Yes, Upjohn.
A lot of glass. We live in the desert, I'm concerned, because I know what goes on in this building.
Well, it is a double glazed window, and it is going to meet the Title 24 calculations.
Okay.
Aren't you worried about your Edison bill?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
Everything will meet the new Green California Building Code, so in order to do that, we have to have so much light, but then also have so much. But everything we put in is dual pane, a minimum dual pane, or the e-glass that protects from the heat.
Okay, and I see, I'm just assuming that this is corrugated steel building? Are you doing any improvement on the front face at all, like stucco in the front face or anything? Or is it just stained steel building?
It is, it is a steel building with glass, and it is going to have braces, similar to what the existing structure is along Upjohn. It will have the same character.
Okay. Well, my only concern, because I look at the garage, and I look at this, and then right next to us, the apartments, which is a stick build with stucco, and a lot of times when we see these kind of buildings going in, it's more of an industrial park, you know, type construction. I think the building's nice, but I'm just, you know, it just seems more industrial rather than, you know, what would be Walmart, or Mervyn's, or something else, where it has a stucco face, you know, something that has a presentation to the public. I'm not saying the whole building, but I'm saying so. Did you give any consideration to that?
Yeah, we could look at a different finish for one of the few panels to make it a slightly different finish.
Anyway, that's just a thought that I like to see, because if things are developed through there, you know, if we put a bunch of metal buildings side by side, even with the glass and the architecture, it's not really gonna be, you know, harmonious to, you know, what we'd like to see as a commercial district. So, Commissioner, any other questions for SCE?
Will we be able to pay our bill there?
Currently, yes. There is a plan before the California Public Utility Commission, has not been determined yet, that those offices, payment offices, may be closed. There's no date or timeframe right now for that to happen, and if that did happen, there would be multiple alternates throughout the town, contracted locations, for people to pay their bills.
Thank you.
So.
Okay, any other questions from the commission? Thank you.
I just have some questions for staff, but maybe we wait till after the...
Yeah, let's do that down here at commission discussion. I'd like to turn it over to the public.
Jim, is it relative to this item, or for just some other question? For this item? You might wanna have me answer those now.
Well, if we're in the middle of a public hearing, maybe we close the public hearing, then I'll answer.
Make sure you get it.
Are there any, anybody from the public that would like to come in? Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, Dave Matthews, consider me an old fuddy-duddy, or whatever you want, but I'm a person who likes to pay my bills where possible, and when possible, in person by check. There are many other people who even come in and pay cash, because, for whatever reason, they don't have a checking account. And maybe this person on Pennington Street was one of those types. But I do not go to these other payment outfits, because some of them end up being locations where I just don't want to tread. Do you understand what I'm saying? They're sleazy, to say the least, and there are other people that feel the same. So I am concerned about keeping that payment center open, and therefore, anything that takes place on the construction, I want to make sure we've got access, ingress and egress, that is acceptable and easy for the public to get in and out of. Those are my concerns, and I keep biting my tongue here, trying to say that maybe we should just hold up the site plan until they decide to move the poles on downs.
Can I respond to that little comment later? We actually asked, I'm sorry, in your package is a letter from Edison talking about the power lines that run over their storage facility, which is against their general order too, and they provided us with a letter on their plan on how they're gonna handle those power lines. So we did ask them about their own power lines going over their own building, and which other building developments they would require to be undergrounded, and they have a plan for dealing with those. So we did kind of bug them about that, so.
Any other public comment? Come up to the mic, please, and give us your name, please.
Yes, I'm Rita Kalwani with Cal Architects. I just want to point out, the top driveway, and when you turn right, it's a visitor parking, so it's outside the fenced area, so if some, a public can enter the building, and there's parking there.
You'll be in access here, and driveway, and parking here for the visitors paying bills.
Which is, I think, an improvement, because it takes the load off China Lake Boulevard, so I like...
It would move specifically for the stoplights, so that people can handle their problems.
Okay. All right, any other comment from the public? Commissioners discussion? Questions?
Yeah, I was gonna couple. So the setback that we're requiring is 15 feet along South China Lake Boulevard. They're saying their fence currently is 14...
Nine.
Nine. Is there an issue with that? Is there anything wrong with us changing that to meet that?
I, my answer is I have a really strange tape measure. It's off three inches, judge it on. I mean, the truth is, is I don't think, to require them to move their foundation and other building three inches for that, I think is being a little bit ministerial, so I'm more practical and say, I would, it's within reasonable.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Of course, the planning commissions can juice whatever they wanna do, but I'm just saying, from a staff standpoint, we looked at it as 15 feet. It still worked. But I wanted to make the point that that's why we're here, is that those changes are important when you look at the use, for future purposes as well.
Now, for the use of an office building, is, you mentioned setbacks being different, setback requirements being, what is the setback requirement for an office building?
Well, if it's an office building, it's 15 feet. If it's a commercial, you can, there is no setback requirement.
Oh, there is no setback.
Right, you could go right to the curb, so...
Okay.
Makes a big difference in some cases.
Okay. Under Community Development, the condition number 10, we have, it says, "Two decorative pedestrian-oriented streetlights shall be constructed within five-foot strips..." Sorry. Item number 10, "Two decorative pedestrian-oriented streetlights shall be constructed within the five-foot strip between the block wall and the sidewalk running parallel." I'm just having a hard time picturing what we're talking about there. Is there a way you can point that out to me to...
This is a previous condition from the other Planning Commission, that they put in the street lighting, and I believe that's on Upjohn, is that not?
Yes.
Are we talking, we're not talking about stoplights, we're talking about...
Street lighting.
Oh, you're talking about just the overhead street lighting?
Correct.
They're gonna put in the new LED lights.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
Currently, again, this is Richard Smith, program manager. Currently on Upjohn, the only lighting you have is on the power poles, and it's kind of directed out on Upjohn Avenue. So in the previous Planning Commission hearing, they asked us to come in and put a couple decorative lights along our property on that side, and take those other fixtures off, and we agreed with the city that we would go ahead and put those handholds in, and actually put two light fixtures up, whatever the city was looking for in there, as far as decorative lights.
Okay, so are those currently up?
No, they're not constructed yet, as far as I know.
And that's just for the...
That's just because we're...
To help pedestrians, it's not shining on the road?
Yes.
Okay.
They will be done.
Okay. Okay. Then I have one other question. Let me get to it here. Nope, lost my place. So is that different than the public works condition one A V I I construct decorative streetlights along Upjohn Avenue frontage?
No, that's the same condition.
That's the same thing.
We both, we, both the planning department, building department wanted to make sure they did it, so we put them both in there.
Right. Okay. I'm good. I, I would, I would be in favor of go ahead and changing that requirement of 15 foot to 14 nine, just to.
And you guys will help us with the downstreet poles, right?
That's right.
We'll pull out our funny tape. Any other commissioner comment?
I have one comment to make. I mean, where is the stopwater drain here in this storm water?
Do you have a, a water basin maintaining any of the water on the, on site? Or is it all going into the street?
On the, on the east, I guess it would be down on our east corner of the property. So kind of just past that drive approach, the secondary drive approach on Upjohn.
Okay.
The water is retained right, yes, right in that corner, just to the right of that. That is a retention basin and then the water is choked down and per the city. The previous planning commission gave us the requirements of how much water they wanted to discharge there. So that water is retained and backs up on that site. There's actually a basin kind of built in there, a swale for the water. And then it's released in accordance with what the city public works wanted onto the roadway.
Thanks, Mr. Smith. One last question for the staff. Based on the square footage, we only need 37 parking spaces and we are stipulating 50. Something different or if you go to community development conditions, number three?
The, the, the reason that we chose the, and that's a previous condition as well as the approved fire planning commission. I think the reason we are requesting that is they, it's, a lot of that is employee parking. So they have, their, their employee workload will change, staff will change. And actually, I believe Edison was in favor of additional parking for their unit, so.
So they, they don't have any problem?
No, I, I never have a problem if somebody wants to build excess parking. It's usually when they want to.
They don't have any problem?
No, they don't have any problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on resolution 17 dash oh four. Resolution of the Planning Commission, the City of Richcrest to approve site plan review 17 oh four to place a new 11,184 square foot administration building for Southern California Edison, property zone C S Service Commercial at 510 and 520 South China Lake Boulevard on a 5.15 acre APN 080-020-67 and 080-020-68. Applicant Rita, and you're going to have to pronounce the last name for me. Pardon me?
Kalwani.
Okay, yeah, that. And I'm sorry. Anyway, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve with the, the adjustment of 15 foot to 14 foot nine with that amendment.
I second.
Our engineer in the group.
Am I being too picky, Gary?
No, but that's okay.
I second.
Commissioner Cox?
Hi.
Commissioner Roger Button?
Hi.
Commissioner Yates?
Hi.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yay.
Four I's, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your time. Okay, moving on, we have item C SPR 17 dash oh one, Kern County Municipal Health Department, Richcrest Crisis Stabilization Center Site Plan Review Staff Report.
Yes, this is a site plan review for a excellent project the staff feels, which is a Kern County Mental Health Department, Richcrest Crisis Stabilization Center. This is being proposed through a grant, which is going to be received. And the hospital is acquiring the land from the city and a site plan is being developed for the, the development, which is going to be, which you will note later, is sort of a phased development for a variety of mental health things. We also have members from the, the, both the hospital and the architect, I believe, to answer questions for the planning commission as we go along. This is the site. This is within the business park. The street that you see on the right is Chelsea. The street that you see in lighter color is Richcrest Boulevard, I'm sorry, China Lake Boulevard. This is what is defined as a, as a flag lot, which means, of course, as you can see, there's a pole, which is a access that goes along the property to China Lake when it was developed, when the business park was developed and is there. The, the site currently is owned by the Richcrest Successor Agency and is being sold to the, the hospital currently is in escrow. And we sure hope to close by the end of the month, by God. The, if I have to work at it and Jim has to for the next 40 hours. The site, as you can see, is the phase, first phase of the project is going to be a, a smaller crisis building, which is the building that you're seeing within the blue lines. I apologize, the lines are slightly out of order. It will be followed by a second building and a third building, which will be utilized for office and other facilities. To the south of the project is the Omni Family Health Center. And immediately to the west is the, what we call the Atari Medical Office Building. It's a really large building, city there off of China Lake Boulevard. Immediately to the north is, is the, again, Taco Bell. The, the building is in IT, which is not part of the site plan really, but it does show you a building that's internal ITs for that building that they're proposing on this site. The, and it's a crisis center. The north elevation, east elevation are defined here. And it's structured. Again, this is in our business park and is not going to be visible actually from China Lake, but rather from Chelsea. And if I can have another slide, here we go. South elevation and west elevations are proposed, as you can see here as well. Oops, and we're, that's our next item. The, the, the major issues that we looked at, we had our, the, that you'll notice, again, we have the issue that's not, which I defined already for you relative to landscaping. The conditions do not require a minimum landscape coverage. Again, we still feel that the staff's position was that it's a, a water conservation is the more important issue than landscaping at this time. However, I'm sure that the, there will be a certain amount of landscaping developed in the project, but we're not requiring a, a minimum coverage requirement in the conditions we have now. The, the, we are perhaps a little way, a little bit ahead of ourself in the sense that we'd like to promote and propose that this, that this site plan be, be approved and the conditions thereof identified, we provided you with both community development conditions, which are in your resolution and expressed within this. And we have also provided you with our public works conditions associated with draining and drainage easements and so on. A couple of the significant issues that we had discussed, that has been a discussion on this, that we probably should identify to you, and I don't think any of these particular drawings or pictures really define that easily for you. But there is a, attached to this property is a easement which goes north and west, I mean, I mean, sorry, south, north and south. And that is within the property itself, but has been fully improved at the request of the city by the medical office to the immediate west. And that will be used, will remain as access, utility access, and will provide some vehicle access relative to serve the properties to the south of it. And also act as a, essentially, forgive me if I would call it, a driveway access for the parking that you will see immediately to the building there. And also provides supporting parking for both medical facilities, the crisis center and the medical office building. There's another access easement which was taken into consideration, which serves for utilities primarily power and sewer. And that's running south, I'm sorry, east, west. The section of the, of the pole, which you'll notice here, I call it the pole of the flag, which is the one that joins China Lake, that's actually fully improved and will provide access both to Atari, to, to the medical offices, call it that, the Taco Bell to the immediate north, the medical office to the south, and provide access to the new crisis center, which will be, which is being proposed. So that will provide traffic access from China Lake. Their intention is to build, as you will note in the drawings, access from Chelsea, so there'll be cross access there. So I believe traffic flow will have a pretty good project here. The conditions are identified. We would be happy, both Lauren is here, also representatives, I mentioned, the architect, are available to answer your questions and conditions, and that's the. Oh, I also want to point out, we're looking at this from an environmental standpoint, again, as a infill project, obviously, it's preexisting. And also that site was originally, there was an environmental impact report done by the Navy when the property was bought from the originally established as, as the business park. So there's ample environmental in there, but I think it's an infill project purist in the sense you take a look at it. So we're looking at that as a court of honor exemption as an infill again, from your environmental standpoint. And that's the small and condensed report from the staff. We'd be glad to answer questions or you have the opportunity to talk to other folks as well.
I have a couple of questions for staff, but any, anything else from any of the rest of the commissioners would like to ask staff question?
No, I'm just curious to know what kind of facility is this?
It's a mental crisis center.
And people reside there?
You'd probably be better off to ask both the, the folks representing that exactly what they're going to be doing in there.
So while he's walking up, let me ask.
Probably going to put bankers in, River.
Staff and Lauren, this, this might be for you as well. I'm, I'm interested in this slide that shows kind of an irregular property line. Is this a lot line adjustment that you're doing, showing phase one on the south side? I assume that's, that's the south side. Why, why the jog in the, in the line? And in addition to that, why in phase one are we not asking for some sort of access to Chelsea? And then also in this, I did not see, as we've required from the other Taco Bell, medical offices, so on and so forth, did we see a condition whereby the applicant agrees to not protest the formation of a landscaping lighting district?
I can answer the question on the irregular shape. That's called a staff goof.
Okay.
So it's, it's actually the full, the, the, there is no lot parcel change, it's just one parcel.
Okay, so that squares off.
Yes, it's just, it's just trying to show you phase one, that's all, that they're proposing. And we, we goofed on the line. It should be down all the way. So I can answer that one. Staff goof.
Lauren?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the access issue off of Chelsea. The applicant, is this thing on? Can everybody hear?
Just get closer to it, it is on, I can hear you.
Okay, the applicant had requested that the city waive or vacate public access requirements off of the, what's identified as that access off of Chelsea. The original map identifies a 60-foot wide dedication for access, drainage and utilities. And the applicant has asked for that portion of the public access to be vacated for access only and retain the rights for drainage and, and utilities. Therefore, that access would become a private access in which the junction or intersection at Chelsea Street would not require true intersection, street improvements, but rather now a, a commercial driveway approach. Currently, there are no conditions for improving anything on that beyond phase one. That would be addressed as a part of the, the police and fire looking at the, any circulation issues or access issues. They may require that there be some sort of all-weather access or a separate way of accessing that property for either fire protection or maybe emergency services access. So staff has not conditioned any improvements beyond that phase one.
Well, my, my concern, the reason I bring it up, is, is eventually we're going to have access to Chelsea, correct?
Can I interject? Jeff Goodspeed with Inland Architects. I thought in the conditions of approval for the, the engineering department, one of the things was design and construct ADA compliant commercial driveway and match-up paving for access off of Chelsea Street. So I guess that's what you were saying, a commercial drive brake that's ADA accessible and brings traffic through also from Chelsea, not just off of?
China Lake.
China Lake. So, and we are willing to do that on phase one. So we'll provide the drainage, curb and gutter and drive improvements and the drive brake from Chelsea in phase one.
Okay, well, that's, that was, that alleviates a concern because if, if we have more and more improvement coming and the only access for fire emergency vehicles off China Lake, as well as to the general public, having a secondary access is paramount to not only fire emergency services, but it seems like flow. And if we're going to do a phase two, phase three, and eventually it's going to be there, I would like to see some sort of improvement down to Chelsea.
I agree. We'll do it in phase one.
Okay. And then staff want to answer about applicant agreeing not to protest the formation of a lighting landscaping district.
Yes, that's under public works condition two L. Prior to building permit issuance, sign and record an affidavit to agree not to protest formation of annexation into street lighting landscaping maintenance district or benefit assessment district for drainage facilities.
Thank you. I have no further questions, commission, before I open up for this, for the architects.
Mr. Chairman, may I also add something here? Staff would also recommend that if, if a landscaping is, if landscaping is proposed for the project, we would like to advise the applicant that it would be wise to have a separate irrigation meter if landscaping is proposed for the site. And the reason for that is the sewer availability fees that are on your tax rolls. It'd be wise to have your irrigation demands met through an irrigation meter, not pay anything on your sewer assessment bill for water that may go on a landscape.
Yes, thank you. We'll have separate meters and separate backflow preventer systems for both systems.
Commission?
Mr. Goodspeed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were there any other conditions or that you had concerns about?
Yes, there's a, there's two other ones actually, possibly three here. So we agree the, the drive will make its way all the way to Chelsea. There's kind of an existing, well, the, the first agreement, you talked about the easement running from north to south. It's just east of the existing dermatology medical building. And it'll share that access between our new phase one building and their dermatology building allowing Taco Bell cross-traffic to the, to the Chinese restaurant cross-traffic across our property. And we plan on leaving that open. We plan on sharing maintenance and access. What I don't want to do, and hopefully we would ask that this would be kind of a condition in this shared access agreement, is that legal document and the drawing up of that between the hospital, when they actually do close escrow, and the dermatology owner, that contract not slow down the. and the dermatology owner, that contract not slow down the certificate of occupancy due to the state funding and the county timeline of them being in June 7th.
I believe, I believe that we have, because I'm handling the sale escrow from the, from the city standpoint, or agency, actually successor agency. Have to be careful, it's a successor agency selling property. That we've agreed that those kinds of things can be dealt with appropriately prior to, after closing, so those issues will be resolved through the escrow process and sale process.
Okay, and that won't hold up the COO for the actual, the building?
I'm sure that we'll have the sale conditions taken care of by the time you get the building built.
Perfect, thank you. And then my second item that I wanted clarification on was the onsite detention basin for stormwater. Everybody, I believe this was a larger development. We're, we're kind of a lot in that development. And it seemed like none of the adjacent properties had retained that stormwater onsite, and it all went to the street. And we're hoping to do the same thing. There's kind of an existing drainage channel that has brought water, I think even from possibly part of the Chinese restaurant, north onto the dermatology. And then most of the dermatology stormwater comes onto our, our parcel through that access drainage easement. And we're hoping just to drain our water, their water, down that street to Chelsea and off, off to the street channel where it may be, I think it keeps migrating north and ends up in a-
Chelsea.
Yeah, in a field there, on Chelsea.
Goes down Chelsea to a storage.
Ends up on Ward. The extension of Ward to the dead end on Ward empties into an unimproved area of a low depression, a natural low depression, a natural sump, so to speak. So, yeah, it does drain that way.
It's 12 and a half acres, it's, the city owns that property.
I mean, if this, if this built out, is it sufficient to hold the water?
The, staff, we have not completely determined that the adequacy of the existing sump is sufficient to handle all the proposed improvements that are proposed for the business park. I would be reluctant to say that with what has been proposed for the business park, not knowing the amount of impervious surfaces that may be constructed there, that the sump would be adequate for all uses upon the business park. I, I have included these grading conditions and detention retention requirements for the compliance to our, our drainage master plan, which requires all projects to have detention upon the site. I believe the other projects, I believe there was non-compliance or rather, the ordinance requirements were not, are not enforced. And therefore, we, we are going to have to suffer the drainage impacts for those projects.
Yeah, the way the drainage is set at now, it doesn't seem there was a master plan in place for the, you know, for the two parcels to the west of us actually draining onto our parcel. And then for us to be burdened to not only survey how much water they're dumping onto our site, but actually properly retain it and calculate it, seems like a, you know, kind of unfair burden to this project and our property owner, considering that's kind of an existing condition that has been allowed to happen. Right now, we don't have the retention basin kind of figured in the site, so it will lose potential building area for, for at least phase three.
I might mention there are subsurface methods of disposal. There are, there are containment vessels, almost like a leach field type of construction that can be constructed on the open areas or even under parking lots, which can pick up that additional drainage and, and retain it.
Just add an additional cost to our parcel. And the, the main, the main criteria that I really worry about is us doing engineering and evaluation on parcels that we don't own and that are already dumping onto our parcel now. So to actually get a figure of how much water they are moving onto our site, I'm going to have to get my survey crew back out there to resurvey two parcels that my client doesn't own. Hopefully them allowing me to do so, and then have my engineer calculate how much water is actually dumping onto my parcel. And then in addition to our water, and then figure out how to retain that at an additional cost to our project. That would, that would just be my main concern for that.
Mr. Culp? My understanding is, is that the original design of this business park was that the runoff waters would go into the, those two sump areas, I think five acre and a 12 acre. The question I have is when I look at the medical office, which is, is fairly new, or even Taco Bell, can we not go back and require them to retain and divert so that it's not impacting this property? In other words, they may be draining north or east, but, but yet, the city ordinance has always been that we're not doing harm to our neighbor. So they're dumping on the neighbor, whether it's a retaining wall or a divert ditch or, or whatever it is, so that it ends up out on Chelsea or out on, what's the name of this road in front of Taco Bell and the medical office?
China Lake Boulevard?
No, 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 that's, that's up here. The one that's running east-west.
It's unnamed.
Okay, so the unnamed street, if, if they diverted it to the unnamed street, so it's not doing harm to this property or any adjacent property, do they not have an obligation to, to put this in a, in a no-harm situation? Furthermore, if, if we've got the five acre and the 12 acre that was originally designed for this, even though the ordinance says that we have on-site, or onsite retention, we've, we've made exception. For example, we have the retention that Home Depot dumps into, and, and we've looked at allowing the warrants to dump into that sump. And so these stumps that are sitting out are natural low depressions, can we not allow the water to go there, even if, if maybe we require some additional improvement to those natural stumps? You know, to try and minimize, but, but these other properties have a responsibility not to harm the property next to it.
Well, the issue, it'd be a civil matter. As far as going back to them and requiring them to comply, I don't believe we would have that opportunity. Any kind of drainage issues that impacts others are, are really going to be a civil matter.
To speak-
There would be some claim brought forth that there's been some damage or they've increased or redirected flows that have impacted a property and therefore they could file suit or make a claim that they've been damaged.
Is this a conversation you could have with the owner of the medical building?
Currently, the medical office building and the Taco Bell are set up to drain down that natural drainage easement that you call the unnamed street. And if we continue that street that runs between Taco Bell and the medical office all the way to Chelsea, we can grade it as such to pick up all the water from that medical building, the Taco Bell, and the Asian restaurant, and take it out to Chelsea and dump it on the street. That's kind of what we planned on doing.
Which would go to the natural stumps.
Which would go the street down Chelsea to the north. And then where it goes, you can kind of see it on Google Earth, it just fans out into that big, probably sandy-
So-
-property out there to the east.
So the question I'd also have is, is in our lighting landscaping district, if we have a maintenance portion in the stumps and that, can that be part of that same agreement?
Well, staff included in the Condition 2L, a benefit assessment district, and that is for drainage facilities. In the event that the area develops and they all agree to participate in a benefit assessment district for drainage facilities, then there would be some funding mechanism to be able to maintain, maybe not necessarily to construct, but to maintain drainage facilities.
Okay, I, that, that answers my questions. I, I would actually prefer that the drainage go to a, a common sump. But that's, that's just my personal feeling, because if we retain in each one of these commercial buildings, we could end up with another health hazard that I'm concerned about too. But I, I think if we have those abilities to develop and improve the natural drainage stumps, and there is a no protest on, on the formation of lighting landscaping district, that's probably my biggest concerns. And if they're, if they're going to do the curb gutter and improvement down to Chelsea, that, that'll take care of erosion and other problems. It'll, it'll take care of a myriad of problems to add an additional expense to them on an onsite. I would, I would prefer waiving that, but that's my personal opinion.
I, I actually agree with you, Chairman Cox. I don't think that would be fair to the developer.
Any other comments from the, from the commission before I turn it over to the public? Questions for the architect? If not, then I'll open the, yes, sir?
Sorry, I do have one, one other topic I wanted clarification on. Street lighting, there's existing street lighting on Chelsea. I'm not sure is that, this, there was a, let's see, D1 here. Coordinate and construct decorative street lighting along Chelsea frontage and the interior street. So we're going to have landscape lighting, not landscape lighting, but parking lot lighting that will be up against that easement on our side of the development for phase one. But we don't plan on actually providing street lighting, which the other developments haven't either. And the other side of that north won't be our property. So down that north side of that street that we're going to construct, we wouldn't want to provide site lighting on someone else's property, nor would we want to have to provide it all the way to Chelsea just for phase one, if that makes sense. So up against the building, there will be some overflow lighting, similar to the layout of the south end of Taco Bell, where there'll be two arms that kind of point over towards the, the street and then back towards our parking lot. That'll be on the north end of phase one. But the street all the way to the east and to Chelsea, and then the Chelsea improvements to the street lighting, I just want a clarification on.
I think the Chelsea lighting should come in with phase three, but I would think that there needs to be some street lighting on phase one on the unnamed street. Lauren, what's your plan there?
Yes, there, there currently is, there aren't any luminaires along that unnamed street. And that was the reason for the condition. We've got, we've got commercial development there and it, what appears to be the terminus of the public access to the properties. And typically, in cul-de-sac developments, there is street lighting, at least one street light along the, the leg of the cul-de-sac and then one street light usually at the end, at the terminus of a cul-de-sac, which this kind of represents. And also along Chelsea, the standards generally wherever you have an intersection, you always have a street light at that intersection for traffic safety. And with that now becoming a, a driveway, not knowing what sort of volume we may have there and what the public may utilize for, for a through access, it was recommended that we look at additional street lighting, particularly at that location.
So there is a, there is a street light existing on Chelsea and where our driveway would be, just to the north of where our drive, drive break would be. If, if we get into that light pole, we would, we would definitely relocate that, that light standard on Chelsea. And we have no problem putting lighting on the private drive at our side of phase one. But like, like you had said, Taco Bell and the medical office and the property to the north of us, all of those parcels, we don't want to be responsible for lighting that existing drive. So I just want some clarification on, you know, what exactly we're going to be responsible for, for doing, since we're already, we've already designed and soon ready to permit the electrical plans for this, this project. So that's just kind of why I'm really giving the clarification.
My suggestion, Lauren, just for me, what is the standard distance between streetlights? You know, on any given thoroughfare?
Generally, 300 feet is the, is the distance. At an absolute minimum at the end of cul-de-sacs and at street intersections.
Okay, and the frontage on phase one to the unknown street?
The pole and the flag?
Well, it's, it's from China Lake Boulevard back to their-
No, 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 not, not from China Lake Boulevard, but from their corner, their, their westerly corner to their easterly corner is how far?
Well, you have to understand-
It's approximately 660 lineal feet, the difference there. It's just short of 660.
Yeah, you have to understand, the flag pole belongs to the property. So the pole, if you will, is that stretch that's approved. And the square of the flag is where it ends there. So the improved portion is, is about half the distance approximately of the, of the total length between the end of the property on Chelsea and China Lake.
So staff is not recommending that they, that they put lighting both on the south and the north side?
Well, there wouldn't be any need for lighting on, on both sides of that.
Okay.
It's at, at the terminus, or somewhere near that terminus would be the recommended location.
And staff is not, not asking them to go west of their property and add additional lighting, are you?
We had looked at that as if it were a terminus or a cul-de-sac with the applicant's request to vacate that very easterly portion. We did look at it as if it were a cul-de-sac, which the standards would call for one mid-block light and then one at the terminus.
Okay, and the breaks that I see in the north side, are those, those are drive entrances, correct?
Would it be okay if I approached the map, just so I could kind of point and so we can clarify? So, sorry to be behind you guys here. There is a existing street light on Chelsea here, existing street light on Chelsea here. This is only parking lot lighting that faces here. There is a couple lights that face this frontage street. Taco Bell has a couple light standards here that have the double arms at about 20 feet tall. So they're probably catching a little bit of the street, but not a lot. It's not a 40-foot street light. Here, what we plan on doing, because we have a 20-foot height restriction on our site lighting too, we plan on doing a very similar scenario where we have site lighting standards that both face the street and the parcel here and here. So that would be possibly a third one here. So, one, two, three, at 20 feet, not a full-blown 40-foot street light, like, like a city standard street light would be if it's on Chelsea. We're going to approve this drive here. We really don't want to have to put site lighting out here, not knowing, you know, what we're going to be doing in the future. This isn't our property, so we would really want to stay away from putting site lighting over there, obviously. This is already developed, and, you know, we'd want to stay away from burdening this site to, to tear up their concrete and sidewalks and run conduit, and I mean, that would be just costly for this project. Considering that this is an existing Taco Bell, this is a large building, and we're a tiny little building, you know, the precedent's already kind of been set where this hasn't been officially lit with 40-foot poles. We're just kind of asking to continue the precedent that the development's already been kind of set at.
Well, my, my thought to that is, is we don't continue with past sins.
Yeah, I understand that.
But my, my, also my suggestion to staff, and would like Lauren and Gary's input, is on phase one, why do we not require, because if it's every 300 feet, a standard light pole here and somewhere in the middle and somewhere here? Just facilitating this phase one, not require- Just facilitating this Phase 1, not requiring down here or down here until this is phased out. Because we're already asking them to do improvements down here. If we have the standard lighting, which we should every 300 feet, this will eliminate this project. Whatever sins are over here, we have flooding issues, we have lighting issues, whatever happened was a previous planning commission, and I can't do anything about them.
Understood, yeah.
But we talked about the flooding and maybe a compromise there, but I'm thinking that we need to have some... And no, nothing on the north, but we need to have some lighting here and continue this lighting down here, which we would also require for them.
On Phase 2 or 3?
Whoever's on the north side. But when you do Phase 2 or Phase 3, do lighting or street requirements depending on those phases.
Yes, yes.
But you have 600 linear feet, and if we do a streetlight every 300, I'm looking at one up this end, one up this end, and somewhere in the middle.
Phase 1's portion is probably...
600, and I understand that, but 3 lights, you know, would more than illuminate. But I'm suggesting that instead of looking to fix somebody else's mistakes or to continue all the way down to Chelsea until he does Phase 3.
So I'm thinking about, like, down the street where we have alternating lights, I think probably every 300 feet. Would we do something similar here where we only have them build maybe 2 lights and then the north property would build the third light in the middle?
And I would be okay with that, too. But I don't think we need to add the expense to this project to... Because they're already doing paving and curb and gutter out to Chelsea until they Phase 2 and Phase 3 deal with the lighting there. Whatever Taco Bell did and the medical offices did, truthfully, I don't want to hang it on this project.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in terms of public works improvements, staff would be okay with a public streetlight at the terminus near the corner of their Phase 1, at what would be considered the terminus of the public right-of-way. And staff would be okay with repositioning the existing... Yes, one light there, and that'd be a public facility, a public standard streetlight, and then relocating the streetlight along Chelsea if deemed necessary to eliminate the driveway approach.
The driveway approach.
And when you say, is that a 40-foot?
Yes.
Per the city standard?
A standard, it's called a marble light decorative...
Marble light, you said?
Marble light.
Marble light, okay. Yeah, we would agree with that. That would be more than adequate agreement, I think.
Okay. I think that we're good there. So if you don't have any other questions?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Turn the time over for a public comment. Anything from the public? Okay, if nothing from the public, then I would entertain a motion on Resolution 1701 with the changes for the drainage to Chelsea and the lighting requirement as stated. So we would do the lighting change.
So moved.
A second.
Commissioner Cox?
Hi.
Commissioner Roger Rottenam?
Hi.
Commissioner Yates?
Hi.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen, all of you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on real quickly. We have SPR 16-7 Tractor Supply Site Plan Review.
Yes, I appreciate the Planning Commission indulgent. We do have a lot of public hearings tonight and site plans to look at. This project is an interesting one, and we'll be seeing more of this. This is the use... It's going into the use of an existing building, the former Walmart building. And it is a tenant improvement lease arrangement between the current property owner, or to-be property owner, I believe, and Tractor Supply, which is the tenant, leased tenant on this project. We received the application and the building plans in the city several months ago, actually about three or four months ago. The building plans have been approved, I believe, and stand ready for construction. They have been approved through the building department process, and those building plans are ready, and we're ready to issue permits pending the approval of the site plan by the Planning Commission as we talk tonight. So that's the purpose, is to move forward. Again, they would like to begin construction as soon as possible as well on the old Walmart building. We have... What we have is a CG area. This is a fairly large site. Some of the uniquenesses of it is that what we're here doing is the aerial that you see here. And your documents indicates the area being considered for Tractor Supply. Tractor Supply is looking at a 32,388 square foot facility to be utilized. And again, I want to point out that the building is owned by one firm that is leasing this to Tractor Supply for the improvements. The unique part of this is the parking is perceived to be going to be utilized essentially jointly by all the participants in the building. There won't be a segregated parking spot for Tractor Supply and a segregated one for Building 2 and a segregated one for Building 3. The parking lot is going to be utilized, much like you see a shopping center jointly utilized by all the tenants of the building. There obviously is a significant number of parking spaces, so one of the first things that the staff looked at was parking location. Plenty of ample space, obviously, at this point. We've also informed the owner, building owner, that as they do site plan for... They come in for the new, the next section of the building or another tenant, they're going to be subject to site plan review once again, which means we'll be looking at the building and the public improvements and all that again each time they bring in another building. They're planning on subdividing this building up and generating new utility hookups and so on. So that was not unique. The interior improvements, obviously, are not a concern necessarily of the commission, but the outside are. And there are some unique things here that I'd like to point out. This is the site plan, as it's pointed out, again, with Tractor Supply indicating that with the access for loading dock and so on on the unit. And again, the parking spots located here, they will have to supply appropriate or conditions within our public works conditions, that they meet, obviously, ADA requirements. And there's some... We'll talk about some condition identified there. We do have, again, the owner of the building here to represent and answer questions for you. The unique part of this, and one of the things that Tractor Supply is asking for, again, staff had a concern with, is the current code doesn't identify, has any sections associated with public display areas, in other words, outside display areas associated with the building. We just don't have anything in the code for that. Wasn't accounted for when the code was written back in blank, blank, before we were born time. And it has there... But they are going to be utilizing what was, in fact, the existing Walmart, when Walmart was there, if you remember, their garden area on the outside of the building. They're going to convert that into a major display area for tractors, equipment, and hay and that kind of stuff. I guess they do sell hay at Tractor Supply. It's interesting.
Still an outdoor area, though.
But it's an outdoor area. And then the other significant portion that was of concern was you notice in the purple here and the green area along the sidewalk, they're also asking for public, for essentially outdoors display. In order to do the purple area, they're going to have to take away some existing parking and... But they have ample parking, but they're going to take away some parking areas and some planter area as well, to existing planter area, to build those display areas. Staff has... There is no code, so staff is going to depend, is asking Planning Commission what their feeling is. They... The Tractor Supply organization believes these are important areas. They're asking us, the planning staff has been asked to provide a letter that they would be approved to do that. So we thought the appropriate way to do that was to bring it to Planning Commission and ask your guidance on this or direction on this, understanding that the problem the staff has is this, we think this is a very professional organization, will do it in an excellent way, display their equipment appropriately and so on. But it does provide an issue associated with the issue about multiple sins is that we do have people who do carpet sales on the corner and would argue that it's a display area. You follow what I'm saying? There is no guideline to direct it. So it will be subjective in the future as the Planning Commission looks at individual projects to determine whether or not their site area is appropriate. There's no... Or we have to go to planning... We have to go to council and try to get specific guidance or ordinance that covers or change in the code to identify these areas. It's just not there. So we are looking for the Planning Commission to give us that this is appropriate, we can go forward with this, and it's appropriate for us to allow this to happen on this site. We do believe it's a good... Staff would recommend it, but it is up to you. We believe we didn't want to make a determination when there's no code to determine it against. So that's the issue there. There, I believe, we have a person from Tractor Supply that appreciates you coming up and be available for questions, but that is a real brief, simple, and of course, you have the conditions already in front of you and that sort of stuff. So that's where we are, unless you have questions of me or we do have the person from there, we can go from there.
I do have a couple of questions in relationship to what they're asking for. So you're saying that we don't have anything in the municipal code, but yet what does Jim Charlon Ford do? What does Richcrest Toyota do? What does the Beebs, where they have tractors, do? Where they all have outdoor display? I'm having a hard time considering this a burden.
The staff didn't consider it a burden either. That's why we're recommending it. The interesting thing is all of those are sort of auto dealers or equipment dealers within our code, and they... With asset equipment or auto dealer, that's allowed within the code. It's identified that their use of those outside display areas for equipment. It doesn't define this because this is not auto equipment.
But Tractor Supply would be considered an equipment dealer?
Well, the staff is recommending this, you understand. We're agreeing with you, sir.
Okay.
But it's not defined, if you understand what I'm saying specifically. Those are as auto dealers, but this isn't.
My only question would be, why wouldn't they want to use the China Lake Boulevard side versus having it facing that entry street?
You'd have to ask them, sir.
So that would be a question for you. He's just saying, we understand the outdoor display, but why would you not want it on the China Lake Boulevard side? That parking area and landscaping area versus College Heights Boulevard, or, yeah, College Heights, I believe it is, isn't it?
It's actually the entrance to the center from...
Unnamed street.
Okay, this is... My name's Lindsay Gad.
We have a lot of unnamed streets here. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
My name's Lindsay Gad. I'm here on behalf of the landlord, Hicks, Netker Companies. Are you referring to the pink area?
Yes.
Okay, that's just our trailer display area. It doesn't... It's nothing stacked higher than about 3 feet, and that's really what it's there for. So it's just Tractor Supply is the one that put the site plan together, and that's where they preferred to have the display area.
Any other questions from commission?
I can see a problem.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
No, I don't. I think I addressed everything with Gary and Lauren prior, and we'll be working with them to finalize all of their conditions.
Okay. Well, let's open it up for public comment, public hearing. Any comment from the public? Wow, we've got four or five coming up. Everybody looks. I'm sorry. It's getting late. I'm getting punchy.
The other thing is I should mention that, again, we're looking at this as environmentally as a infill.
Yes.
It's actually not even... There's no impact to the environment at all on it, but...
Okay, then. I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion on Resolution 17-07, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Richcrest to approve site plan review 1607 to build a new Tractor Supply store in the vacant building of 911 South China Lake Boulevard, Zoned CG General Commercial on 32,368 square foot of land, APN number 509020-22, developer Hicks. Pronounce it for me. Richcrest LLC, Ray Hicks. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Cox?
Hi.
Commissioner Roger Rottenam?
Hi.
Commissioner Yates?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on, number 11, discussion, another action item, site plan 12 for address, 1245 North China Lake Boulevard, corner of Ward and China Lake, conversion of the Pizza Hut and the Starbucks, or to the new Starbucks.
Yes, this is a discussion item for the Planning Commission. The reason we're bringing this to you is we believe this will be a time-sensitive project when it hits our office, and we may want to do a site review, I mean, I'm sorry, a staff review on this. And I wanted to get your input before, and the public input, before we get to that situation where we're doing a staff review prior to that. We believe this is a fairly simple project. This is presented to us by their, by the architect firm, and they're proposing, let's see if I can get this to work, a reuse of the existing building at the corner of China Lake and Ward, which is currently being utilized by Pizza Hut. They wish to establish a new Starbucks in this facility. It's a large facility, and it would be a very large Starbucks. And we're being informed that they may seek a wine and...
Liquor license.
Liquor license as well, so it'll be a wine and Starbucks, so you can drink your coffee and drink your wine at the same time, so, yeah, I'm not sure how that's going to work.
Do they have an Uber phone booth there?
Yeah, we have an Uber phone booth. It'll be a very trendy... Before we know it, we'll be Seattle. Okay. The other, the unique parts of this that we were very interested in from a staff standpoint was you'll notice the drive-through parking line, if you will. They're going to put a part, a drive-through, which is one of their major reasons for looking at this building, through that. And they also want to have an outside patio area, which is what you see in the drawing here that's somewhat hard to see. But those are tables for an outside parking area, a drive-through area, I mean, I'm sorry, eating area and drinking area. And we have not seen many... I'm going to show you two architectural views in a second, but not much in terms of the interior designs and all that. We have not seen any building plans at this point. We're simply showing you what we have here. That's why we don't have a formal application. It's not in front of you for site plan, formal site plan review, but I wanted to get some input from you on this. The other thing that I wanted to point out, the major concern we had also was, and we worked with our engineering department to make sure we had no easement accesses or easement impingements, if you will, on our sidewalk and our streets there because it's a corner intersection. When they expand this forward, if you'll take a look at that, it would actually change also the look of the place because of the outlook, because there's some landscaping in here that would be removed, obviously, as they put in the drive-through, because there's just not enough land there, we perceive. Again, we don't have detailed drawings to be able to determine dimensions, but it looks pretty obvious to us that that's going to affect their current landscaping they have in there and in that location, which would be a reduction, again, we talked about landscaping issues. So we're looking for any input you might have on this or major concerns you might have on this design. The exterior, they're pointing out to us, in order to meet their requirements, they're going to lower the roof line to extent and take some of the upper portion...
The Pizza Hut look off?
The Pizza Hut look and make it a Starbucks look, whatever that Starbucks look is. And they're eliminating... So the major thing here is this structure on the roof that'll be reduced in size. And the Pizza Hut, the exterior may be some modifications. Again, however, we have not seen any building plans, so we're not in a position. This is a picture of the current area. As you can see, I'm concerned, you can see why I was concerned, perhaps. We've got to get a driveway, a driveway for their, a drive-through here, and we've got to have a picnic area in there. It's going to get tight, in my opinion, relative to that. And I think we're going to see some of this grass area removed. of this, this, this grass area removed as they go through that process, but I haven't seen the drawings yet for that. So, that's my concern. They tend to use the existing sign exactly the way it is, only it'll say Starbucks there, and from what I've been told, which also is interesting, because I think they're going to have, again, they're going to be real close to their drive-through driveway there. So, it'll be interesting to see how they work on that. And then, of course, that would be reduced in height and some dimensional changes, and that's what it looks like right now. We perceive, there's plenty of parking, obviously, associated with the project, and of course we would require if they build this that they would, in this, in the conditions, that it would have a double striping again, and all the things we need for ADA associated with that.
So is this parking lot?
Also, they'll have to build, well, they have a trash, but they have another trash, we're going to have to make sure that trash is capable of handling what they have. Sir, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. Is this not a shared parking lot with another building down?
Yes, it is.
The old Camarco building?
Right.
Okay.
It's not actually shared, the parking, there's a dividing, but there's no, there's a property line in there, they actually own enough parking on their property line, but the parking is shared, I mean, there's no separation between.
Do we have lots of parking there on the east side, right there?
Uh, no, there's, well, there is, not actually, they're not really utilizing, there is some parking, but you'll notice there's no parking spaces defined in there, it's just open, there's no parking delineation in there, it's kind of interesting.
Okay, and what is, what is the width from the building to the sidewalk?
I don't have those dimensions in front of me.
Lauren, do you know? The, the distance from the building to the sidewalk, if they're putting in a drive there?
I don't, I don't have those dimensions. They, the site plan that they submitted does not have any dimensions.
We don't have any dimensioning on it.
Flow of traffic, are they coming off China Lake, and they doing the circle and then exiting onto Ward, so that they get the lighted intersection?
That's the way it looks.
Well, we might probably ask them to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Because to try and enter with the China Lake medians and stuff like that, it would be a problem, where if they, they come into the parking lot and then exit onto Ward, they're already on an intersection.
Well, actually, what I perceived, what they would be doing also is entering on Ward, going through that, the galley or the parking area, and then going that way.
Well, they can enter or exit, but, but I'd like to see the exit not, not funnel onto China Lake.
Okay.
Because the medians, they, we, we just have too many people that want to kind of kitty-corner or do something else, and so if they put that flow to where that exits onto Ward, and if there's sufficient width there and it meets engineering, I'm, I'm okay with that, and reducing the height doesn't, doesn't present a problem for me. I, I don't see a problem. Commission?
Do they plan on putting a barrier between the seating area and the drive-through? Any kind of, like, short fence or anything like that?
You know, we don't have a drawing that indicates that, but it would be a safety issue, I would think they would, would probably put a decorative fence up.
Normally, a six-inch curb, just like they do on China Lake, is classified as a legal barrier, so if they do a driveway, they'll have a curb.
But the practice generally of Starbucks, if you take a look at it, is they put a decorative fence there, so I'm assuming when we see the building plans, it'll show that, but we don't have those right now. That's why it's a discussion and not a site plan review.
You're right. I, I don't, I don't see any particular issues from, from my standpoint. Jim?
Yeah, I've got one thing. So, there, how, how does this work with them wanting to sell liquor and having a drive-through? Because, can they sell liquor from the drive-through? That seems like a pretty bad.
I, I would not think so. I think the, the, the wine would be inside. What they've asked me was.
Is that already prohibited through state law or something like that?
Uh, I believe you can't sell liquor, yeah, to a.
Beverage already falls as a guideline, you have to get out of your car and go.
You can't have an open container in a car, I believe that's the case. But the reality is, I think what happens is the wine is sold inside the, with cheese and that kind of stuff when you're sitting down inside or in the patio.
So you pick up your wine, cheese, and legal marijuana.
And then you go to, go, then you go get your coffee and your bagel, and then you go outside for breakfast.
I'm sorry, come on, I've got a light.
No, we got, we got, we got to lighten this up a little bit. The, the, what we were, the reason I'm, I'm saying that is I had a conversation with the architect, and they asked, they were asking me about the liquor license and the process within Richcrest and their interest in looking at wine. That's all I have right now, so that's the reason I mentioned that. The other thing I probably should have mentioned is that we've had a, a preliminary conversation with the Pizza Hut people, and they're planning, and just so people know, they're looking at a relocation of their facility to a delivery and pickup only, not this full store. So, I would appreciate the press understand that we're not seeing Pizza Hut go away at this point, we're just, it probably would be a relocation, location they've defined, I'm in discussion, it's confidential, but they have a location they're looking at, so. But that's, that's the, it would be an interesting store for us, we don't have, not like we, we need more coffee shops, I think.
I think the only thing like it is probably Pony Express.
Correct. Their main interest in this, their main, I think their main interest, interest in this site is the drive-through. They want to have a drive-through.
Do they plan on keeping the other location open as well?
They have, they have, they smile at me when I ask them that question, so I don't know the answer to that.
Someone was, I don't know how this actually works, someone was telling me with the, the way the franchises work with Starbucks, it's probably not owned by the same person.
It could, it could well be that way. I have seen.
I don't know if that's true, but they kind of compete against each other, apparently.
I've seen eight and ten Starbucks in the same city, so.
Yeah.
Every six hundred feet with a light pole, you get a Starbucks, so.
So since this is a discussion item, is there anything from the public that they might like to share with the staff?
Yeah, Dave Matthews, again. So I gather what you're saying is that Pizza Hut is not actually going out of business, they're just going to pick up and delivery location. And to me, just, I'll throw this word out there, that made Pizza Hut kind of unique, that you, it was a place where you could go in and actually kind of have a family meal with a group of people. Some of the other ones, you can't do that, and I think we've got enough delivery and pickup pizza places. If it comes to that, I'll make my own. The Starbucks, I guess, is going to be a new location, it's not, they're not going to close the one down by the Arby's and move.
We're not certain of that, they smile at me when I ask them that question, so that tells me that it could go either way, I'm not sure what they're doing, and it may be a separate franchise owner, as Mr. Sanders talks about, that happens, so I don't know that information, what they're going to do with the old store. I can tell you that having multiple stores in one city is not unusual with Starbucks.
Yeah. Well, we already have, but not quite, I don't know. Anyway, the other thing is about getting a liquor license or, or whatever, isn't there a, some kind of a school in that building, the old Camarco building, of some kind? Or am I thinking of another building? I don't know.
Yeah, it's a Christian school.
Yeah. Well, they may not be able to get it.
They, that's a choice that they would have to, process they'd have to go through, yes, sir. And that's done through the state, they control the liquor license process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anything else?
I was just commenting that you could already get a beer in Pizza Hut, so.
Yeah. I think it's probably a difference between hard liquor and, and not.
Yes.
So. Yes, sir, your name?
I am Michael McFadden, I'm actually here on behalf of both Starbucks and MCG Architecture.
Great.
I can answer one of your questions, Commissioner Yates, regarding the barrier for the patio seating area. There's twenty-four seats there, there will be a guardrail surrounding the entire thing, it won't just be a curb. And Commissioner Sanders, regarding the sale of alcohol on a drive-through, I promise you we don't do that. They're very strict about their policies for that. All alcohol is sold in a clear container, so they'll open the bottle of wine or beer, if it's beer, they put it into a clear cup, which allows them to monitor it more clearly, there's no chance of kids sneaking a drink if it's in a clear cup like that. And also, I have elevations that were given me, given to me by the designing architect this morning, if, if you'd like to see them, I have them here.
Sure.
Paper copies.
No, I was just, this is new.
Jim? Can I have a sec? Thank you.
And again, we're very early in this project, so the information we have available is still extremely limited, but I'd, I'd like to help wherever I can. I believe also the, the trash enclosure was brought up as a concern, we are constructing a new ten-foot by twenty-foot enclosure to make sure that everything is enclosed.
So, we're seeing a reduction in the height of the building and, and the architectural look of the building as well. You're also, are you changing the, is that a patio that I'm seeing on the south side?
Uh, the entire existing sidewalk surrounding the building is actually not ADA compliant. Uh, we're going to be remodeling most of that to make it ADA compliant, including a new curb ramp and a switchback ramp, which is the only way that we can meet the grade difference on the east side of the building.
Okay.
Uh, the only patio is going to be on the west side of the building, as you see there, with twenty-four seats on the inside of the drive-through radius.
The west side or the east side?
Is that, oh, the east side, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. Is that shaded patio?
It will be covered, yes.
Okay.
Are you going to reduce, we were talking about, I was talking about the landscaping and trying to get the driveway in and all that, are you going to reduce part of that green landscaping that exists now? Do you know?
It will be adjusted, I know it will be modified.
See, I have a picture, I think.
I don't know if the overall area is going to be reduced or not.
You know, I'm talking about between the sidewalk and.
Right.
Existing, okay. I just, I'm looking at the layout, I haven't seen any dimensions, so I haven't, we're not sure how.
Yeah, they haven't.
How wide out all of it fit in, yeah.
We're looking forward to seeing this. Any other questions?
And thank you for coming, by the way.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, so item twelve, commissioner items or comments, start with Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah, I'm just really happy to be here, so thank you for the, the welcome, and nice full agenda for my first meeting. So we went over a couple of things that I wanted to see if, if, just what we need to do for future issues here. So on two issues, two items today, we've discussed the not enforcing a coverage of landscaping requirement. Is this something that we need to codify?
The answer is yes.
We need to build this into the new school code?
Yes, this is something that will come to the commission, we'll make a decision so that we don't have this conflict going on.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good to me.
It will be an item, but not tonight.
Yeah, not tonight, obviously, thank you. Okay, and then the other one was, Gary, it seemed like you were asking for kind of a resolution on what, what to do with frontage displays for equipment vehicles, and, and I don't know if we need to have that as a future discussion item as well, I don't know.
Or a case by case.
Yeah, I mean, basically what I was asking is, do you want to, you know, the unfortunate, we can go with a, with a, because it's not really in the code one way or the other, so you can go with what I call more selective or judgmental case, this case works for me, so I'm willing to do this, this case doesn't, rather than a hard, you know, I, I think it's going to be hard to write, one of the reasons I think that it doesn't in the code, it's hard to write that because there's all so many different kinds of display processes that it's hard to know whether you're talking about, you know, a person trying to put tables on the sidewalk, or somebody who's building a real live, you know, trailer or tractor or something like that, that's a, so, it, I think that's why we're asking, and it's not as though we have that process, I think the landscaping is one where we see every time we have something, whereas this one's more of a hit and miss kind of a, very few people are.
Might be pretty rare.
Running over, my, running in to say we want to do a, a display.
Okay.
In the case of Starbucks, they're going to have people display, but we're talking about that later. But that's a, that's an example in the picnic area.
I, I think to that question, it seems to me like it'd be a, you know, more of a case by case, because we've seen in the past where RV companies have come in and displayed, you know, Walmart's parking lot or somebody else's parking lot, and, and, and so there's going to be displays, if we're going to have a permanent business, we probably ought to look at it and see if it's compatible, you know, with, with the use surrounding it, if it's going to harm the neighbor or adjacent, you know, businesses or something like that. I, I'm afraid that if we, if we turn around and we say this is the rule, that we'll end up regretting it. I always feel like that there has to be a slight wiggle that, that we can move to allow commerce to, to develop, because if we make it black and white, I, I think we'd live to regret, to regret it.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I had, so just thank you for having me.
Thank you. Commissioner Yates?
Yeah, I'm excited to see this, if I'm saying this right, this mental health facility come here.
Can you turn your mic, please?
I'm sorry, Mr. Matthews. I'm excited to see this mental health facility to come here. We, in Richcrest, many of us may not know, but there's a lot of people that are in dire needs of, of mental health, and the only facility they get that help at mostly is they have to go to Bakersfield. So, I just want to comment on, it's a good thing to come to our city.
Absolutely.
I might comment also, Commissioner, that that's, that, the best part of that is it's also a grant-funded project to a great extent, although I, I will compliment the hospital and their ability to buy the land and donate the land to the project is matching, if you will, and then there's a, a significant grant money being proposed for the building of the facility, and so, it's, it's a great project, and staff is really trying to make it work as quickly and as due diligently as we can and make it a good project, so we're looking forward to seeing as well.
So we hope we didn't add too much burden to you?
Never.
Commissioner Solomon Rajaratnam.
I'm really excited to see so many projects, this shows we have economic development going on, so, which is good for our community, hope to see a lot more going on, and want to welcome Mr. Commissioner Sanders to the planning commission, and some new person is sitting there, so probably she should be introduced.
Go ahead.
Well, I was going to hold off until the staff, my staff stops, so.
Okay, yeah, stop by tomorrow. Sorry, thank you.
That's all? That's all? I too would like to welcome Commissioner Sanders, our, our new commissioners, bringing a great wealth to us. I am especially grateful for Commissioner Sanders' willingness to serve, because he brings a lot to the table, a lot of steady knowledge, and, and I would hate to lose that. I want to thank staff, not only for their preparation, Lauren, for your preparation, your willingness to work with us on this medical facility. I, I think we've done some good work here today and, and still provided safe harbor for the city. I would like to thank our young ladies here, and I apologize for keeping you two and a half hours, I promise normally it's not that long, and, and the rest of you for your participation, so, thank you for, for doing that, and, and your comments are, are appreciated. We're grateful for the, the press to be here, to have the paper here and report what the, the planning commission does, so, thank you so much, and we'll go to staff items at this point.
Do you want to start, and I'll follow, or?
Real quickly, just going to give you an update on a few things, just want to let you know that our city bus garage, we issued the, the certificate of occupancy today, a few minor punch list items, but we are substantially complete with the bus garage project. Our Church Street sewer line project is, is moving along on schedule. We do have the water district that's also in Church Street, replacing some valves, some old abandoned lines and services there, working in conjunction with our contractor down in construction. We recently got our design wind speed changed here in our, at Richcrest, we're now at a hundred and ten, we were previously at one hundred and thirty for our design wind speed requirements. This coming, uh, planning commission meeting in February, you're going to have a couple of land divisions before you. The, there was one at the corner of China Lake Boulevard and Bowman, it's on that, let's see, it'd be on the north westerly corner, and you're going to have a residential track proposed to you, it's out, off of Kendall. It's, uh, out, off of, uh, Kendall and, uh, Westerly of, uh, Del Rosa, out near the Horton Track or the Stephen Hare Tracks. So you'll have a couple of land divisions there you'll be looking at. Uh, wanna remind you that there's an infrastructure meeting, uh, that's on Thursday at 5:00. And also let you know that we're currently under the new, uh, 2016 building code. So far, so good. Uh, I don't think, uh, all the, uh, the, uh, issues have surfaced yet. Whatever, uh, onerous requirements there might be, uh, haven't really revealed themselves yet. The counties indicated that they'd like to give the new building code to settle in for a few months to see where the flaws might lie. And they intend to come over and give us a, uh, workshop for, uh, the new, uh, building code requirements. And that's, uh, about all I can, oh, I do have a field review tomorrow with Caltrans for our, uh, CMAC project for the completion of Sunland between Bowman and Dolphin, as well as a field review with Caltrans for our RSTP project, which is the, uh, design and construction of the, uh, east side of Downs between Ridgecrest Boulevard and Upjohn. Um, and so, uh, quite a bit, quite a bit coming up here.
One question, my understanding is Caltrans has taken a hard line on Warren Automotive Development?
Uh, they are, uh, looking at that very closely. And they are, uh, uh, they have imposed some, uh, conditions upon them for, uh, median and drainage and, uh, also, uh, some documents from the city regarding, uh, our environmental compliance process.
Okay, so they're still looking at requiring them to do the median even past their property line?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Gary?
Yes, uh, first, I'd, I'd like to introduce to the Planning Commission, uh, a new staff person. Heather, uh, I'm gonna mispronounce it. Berlock is, uh, going to be acting as our administrative, uh, assistant and support person for the Planning Commission in the future. And I will tell you, between her and Paul Leonard, who, uh, is our, I'm sure you're aware of our Planning Tech, we could not have gotten this agenda out without their help and support. Uh, they did a great job and we hope to have them continue to do so and be a partner in our efforts. And of course, we thank our city clerk for stepping in and helping out, uh, tonight to get the transition going. So that's been an important, uh, part and we look forward to that. We have a lot of agenda material to give you in the future. It's not gonna be slow and we're gonna be wondering what to talk about. There's gonna be a lot. We have several, as, 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 um, uh, our city engineer, uh, mentioned, Lauren mentioned, we have two, uh, a parcel map and a track map coming and ready to come forward, uh, for next meeting. And we've had inter, inner, inner discussions and discussions, beginning discussions on, on some of the, uh, conditioning of those with the, with the, uh, applicant's engineering firm, Cornerstone. And, uh, we're going to actually see some site plan reviews come forward and some other issues associated with, uh, some new physical apartment contracts, uh, construction building. So we're gonna be seeing some new, we're, we're hoping very, across my finger, across my leg, and hope, hope it doesn't change, but, uh, we're gonna be seeing some new apartment construction proposals, actual construction instead of track maps, which you've seen lots of, we have lots of approved and nothing gets built. This is the first, uh, we're seeing where they're really going forward to looking at trying to, uh, get construction going. So that's gonna be a real help in that. I have a couple of items administratively. Mr. Sanders mentioned the fact we're, we're looking for some direction on this landscaping water issue. I think it's a real dichotomy that has to be resolved. And, and, um, um, you know, we, we're in a position where we really wanna support the water use issue in the valley and the GSA. We've got a lot of efforts going on to trying to conserve that. And it seems a little bit, uh, difficult to have requiring landscaping when we, we're, we're trying to minimize landscaping, if you understand the difference. So that's a challenge you will have to discuss, and we look forward to that. And we should have that as an agenda item for the, for at least the next meeting, if one sooner. Um, I mean, at, at minimum. We also want to have, staff would like to know, we have some, um, committees and some, uh, subcommittees, if you will, of the Planning Commission that were formed, uh, some of which we believe, uh, the current staff believes probably are, are not really, um, operating or have a necessity to be in existence, so we're kind of wondering whether or not we'd like to go through some of those subcommit, that's the, things like the Bowman, uh, 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 special district area of the, um, commercial district, or it's a special district. And then, and then, uh, some of the, there's some others, the median art, there seems to be some, um, discussion as to what its scope is, whether it's, uh, just China Lake and Ridgecrest, I mean, uh, China Lake and, and Ridgecrest Boulevard or parcel Ridgecrest Boulevard, or whether it extends beyond that into all of the various, uh, skitty city medians. We wanna make sure we're clear and the council's clear on what we're doing there 'cause there's a, staff has got some, just, some disagreements and, and what's included, what isn't, so we're gonna go back. We're gonna do a staff study, I mean, a minute's study to see what that's at, but we'd like to have some comment back. So I, we need a, we need a meeting, I guess, to discuss what, whether we wanna continue those and, and if so, which ones we wanna consider and, uh, which, you know, again, assigning people for those committees or continuing those committee assignments. So we'd like to have, the staff would like to see you put that on the agenda, so an item, if possible, to discuss those, uh, perhaps at the next meeting as well, if we have time, because we're gonna have at least two, two of those items for, for review, the track map and the other. And then I expect another site plan review, so we might have four or five more items for you next meeting, plus these other issues. The final item that I'd like to discuss also is we'd like to, um, all of you, fortunately, our, our council has picked, has chosen people for the Planning Commission with one exception that are not new to Planning Commissions. You've all been on Planning Commission before, years served, so you have some experience and, and, uh, information that you've gathered on that issue. But we'd like to, the staff would like to go through some basic, some, forgive me if I call 101, issues associated with Planning Commission, your responsibilities, your conditions. And we, and then we also have some, some issues about, uh, you know, do we need to do, um, public hearings for site plan review? When do we do staff reports, staff plans, site plan reviews? When do we do planning? So I'd like to have that and we are, uh, I've, I've discussed that with our city manager and he's willing, uh, to have our city attorney involved in that discussion so you can ask questions, which we rarely have here, and, and those kinds of things to, uh, look at that. So, um, and so, yeah. So we're looking at those basic kinds of issues and I'd like to have, see whether you have an interest in that and whether it would be something you want us to put on the agenda to have that discussion and have the city attorney here to help you answer questions. You may have questions about that. We have an issue associated with, uh, with conditions associated with this, with sometime called the chicken ordinance or that kind of issue, which is another issue with sitting back there that would provide us with some interesting things. We're gonna have some other issues as the Parks Department looks at, uh, the potential of closing the, the, the pool, um, Penny, you know, our Penny Pool. There's gonna be some, some back, backwash to that and, you know, there's been some proposals for other kinds of developments in there, so you might wanna have some input on that. So I think there's some generalized topics that we'd like to throw at you and have the plant, and have the, have the city attorney here to answer your questions and give you comments on that, if that's something that you'd like to do. So we're looking for those agenda items, make sure that those agenda items are appropriate and, uh, something you wanna see, rather than we're just spending time for you to discuss something you don't wanna hear about the first place. So those are the, the things that we're looking at for the future for staff. And one of the things that, that this particular, you know, forgive me, I'm taking this over as a staff and pushing this, is to compress, one of the key things we're looking at is to try to help the development process in town and, and to allow our development, developers and our businesses to be able to get their approvals and processes quicker. Uh, we're not interested in, in changing the conditions per se, the requirements they have, but to try to compress that timeframe.
Process.
The process and timeframe in particular, because to development, time is money. So, uh, we're gonna be, staff is trying to work at ways to compress that process as much as possible and you may hear some of that with you, to try to get that quicker and faster. Um, one of the reasons I mentioned the Starbucks is so we can compress that time as well. So those are examples of what we're trying to do and why we did the, the, you heard about the, uh, we do intend to keep you informed of what we're doing and how we're doing it and get, look for your advice for future issues and so on, but we're trying to make time speed up, if you will. So that's where we are and I appreciate your, look forward to all of you serving and, and I think we've got a great, frankly, on a personal basis, I think we've got a great Planning Commission and I appreciate all of your experience and participation in the process and look forward to, uh, serving you as best we can.
Thank you. Any other comments from commission? Well, with that, then we will adjourn our meeting today at 8:44.